I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students an education that nurtures intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with the knowledge, problem-solving abilities, and character needed to participate ethically, adapt, succeed, and contribute in their future educational career and community endeavors. Okay, may I have a motion for approval of the present agenda?
Motion, second.
Does anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we're going to move into our public comment section. This is the purpose of, for the board to hear any public comments related to district business or anything on the agenda. Is there anyone?
There we go. All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to give a shout out to the robotics program at, at the district. We took the middle school team, the First Tech Challenge, to Albany Academy for competition on Saturday. And then Rachel took the First Lego League to Albany Academy on Sunday. And she'll talk about the Lego League, but the First Tech Challenge kids did phenomenal. There were 27 teams competing. And First Tech Challenges is for grades seven through 12. So most of the kids that they were playing against are high schoolers. In fact, one of my former student teachers is the coach for the Red Hook team, and his team is mostly AP Physics kids. So the fact that our kids won three out of their five matches, and they're seventh and eighth graders, really says a lot about their determination and their, their, you know, skills and really trying to, to do the hard work. So it was, it was a fun event. We'll be at Broad Albin Perth on Sunday. So if anybody wants to make the trek up there, and I will try to find the link and send the link to Andrew ahead of time so that he can disseminate it to you, and you can watch the live YouTube. And then they, they, the high school robotics team, they had their kickoff beginning of January, and they're actively prototyping and designing the robot for their competition, which will be in March. So we're hoping sometime February, March, April, we'll have at least my two teams. And I'm sure Rachel will bring the First Lego team in to do demos for you guys so you can see what the kids have been working on and how, how hard this is and how, how well that those kids are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Hi. It was Martin Luther King Day yesterday. I've been reading a lot of King for the last five years. I will bet there's not a person in this room who's heard of the 1999 Martin Luther King assassination conspiracy trial. A jury of 12 came back and unanimously said King was killed by a government conspiracy of local, state, and United States of American agencies. This trial is online. I highly recommend you read it. I'm working on a graphic novel called Freedom Fighter about it. And the first edition of that is in the Chatham Library. Among King's great statements during the latter part of his life was, "The greatest purveyor of violence in the world today is my own country." In 2025, the greatest purveyor of violence today is the United States of America. And the Chatham School Board is deeply involved in the genocide in Palestine. You guys like the giant and Jack and the Beanstalk, Jack and the Beanstalk grind their bones to make your bread. You're sending my tax dollars to Raytheon, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, and all of these war contractors, and you're grinding the bones of Palestinian children to make your $5,000 to $10,000? A month of unearned money for doing nothing but remaining silent. And if you're on the board near retiree, rubber stamping, blowing up of every school in Gaza. Another statement by Martin Luther King was, "The three evils of America: racism, militarism, and poverty, extreme inequality." And these are demonstrated when you take my tax dollars and you murder children to fund your pensions. You guys are participants in the three evils of America. And the students, if they are wise, should take a look into how the system runs, where the superintendent forbids the board to stop funding genocide. Tells them they're breaking rules or breaking the law. What kind of system requires that taxpayers murder children for the benefits of retired education employees? These are questions that I'm sure Dr. King, a lover of truth, philosophy, philo, love, sophy, true, would have brought to your attention. Thank you very much.
Mr. Coe. Many people don't understand what the public nature of the school board meeting is. It is not a meeting for the public. It is a meeting for the board to do business, the public can observe. We are not mandated to have public comment. Public comment is to be, it's a limited forum. It is meant, no, it is a limited forum. It is meant for district business. I did not hear anything about district business in any of your comments the last three times. We contract with our employees. We contract with-
Mr. Coe, we gave you your time. Please let our board president speak.
We contract with our employees. We pay them salary and benefits. The district responsibility ends on payday. The district does not tell them where to grocery shop. The district does not tell them where to buy their cell phones. The district does not tell them which banks to use. The district does not tell them how to invest their money. The district business is concluded on payday. So that is not a topic appropriate for this public forum. It's a limited public forum for agenda items and district business only. This is not a district business item, and we will not hear from this topic again. It is closed.
The major vote, the school budget can finance the war contractors, engineers, massacring children, blowing up schools in Gaza. I know that you don't want to hear-
Mr. Coe, you're out of order. We let you speak.
But I would not be intimidated by you lying and saying this isn't our school business. It is.
Yes, we have more board comments, please.
I have three, one, um- Seven, yep, this is better. Um, hi, my name is Zina. I have two children in the Chatham High School. My daughter is a freshman, and a few weeks into the school year, she started experiencing headaches, really bad headaches every single day, eye irritation, fatigue, temperature changes that were weird, like really sweaty feet, and eventually mood changes. So I had heard about the rumors that there's a mold problem in the high school. And I'd also seen photos that my children had sent me of the ceiling diffusers with mold coming out of them. So that was kind of on my radar. So not long after these symptoms started, I thought that maybe that was a possibility of why she was having these symptoms. And I communicated with the nurse and the high school principal, and eventually I met with the superintendents about it later on in November. And they assured me that there was no mold problem, absolutely not. That's dust in the ceiling diffusers, not mold. They kept on pointing to the facilities' testing reports that had been done. So that was that. And I just want to redo a few things about mold. Mold can grow anywhere in the body. Mold is the living organism. Mycotoxins are the non-living toxins that are produced by the mold. Mold illness occurs largely due to the accumulation of excess mycotoxins, which are highly toxic, toxic to all cells and tissues of the body. Mycotoxins, which translates to fungi poison, are so toxic that they have been studied and used for biological warfare. Mycotoxins are extremely carcinogenic. These toxins hijack the body and can cause liver damage, kidney damage, thyroid damage, autoimmune disease, brain damage and disease, cancer, reproductive system damage, adrenal dysfunction, and oxidative stress. So I did have Madeline tested. She did a mycotoxin test as well as an organics, an organic acids test, which is like a metabolic health test. And we got the results back, and she has high levels of mold as well as mycotoxins. The results showed that her body is having an extreme inflammatory response to the mold. She has black mold markers that are high, mitochondria damage, fungus in her gut, extreme lack of oxygenation to her tissues, which is caused by the fungal overgrowth in her gut, elevated stress response, elevated dopamine, neuroinflammation in her brain. The physician said her brain is essentially on fire, and amino toxicity. So the main cause of exposure that tend to lead to disease are water damaged buildings. And I know that the roof here at the high school was leaking for years. So, you know, mold grows in 24 to 48 hours. So it, it would be silly to think that we had a leaking, leaking roof for years, and there's no water damage, and there's no mold problem. So I read through the facilities' testing reports, and I found some problems with it. To start, limited air door, limited indoor air quality monitoring was not the appropriate method for the issue at hand as this system only measures a few specific air pollutants. Full indoor air quality monitoring should have been done as this method can measure a wide range of air pollutants, including the presence of biological pollutants and volatile organic compounds, which are both indicators of mold. Next, the spore trap sampling results. It was noted in the report that the live plants from rooms 124 and 125 were removed 72 hours prior to the sampling event. I'm assuming air circulation systems were not turned off for the sampling event, or that would have been noted as well. All air circulation systems should have been turned off as air movement can significantly impact the air concentration of airborne spores collected on the trap. And then last but most important, there was no inspection or testing done inside the ductwork. The only mention of this is in the report dated March 18th, 2024, on page three stating that Watson attempted to visually inspect the supply duct using a borescope, but the borescope was too large for the diffuser opening, and Watson was not able to see into the duct system. So I'm not sure why they didn't just take the diffuser off the, off of the ceiling or go and get the appropriate borescope. I don't know how you just decide like, oh, okay, we're not going to test that. So anyway, it's disappointing because I would have expected everyone to have thoroughly read the reports and identified that the ductwork hadn't been tested. I think that's very significant, and this is like a really serious problem. And I know that it's been something that you've all known about for at least a year now. And here we are, plowing into the capital project, spending millions of dollars to make the building look nicer when the reality is, is that the bones are probably compromised. So, you know, there's that. Anyway, I just, it, something needs to be done. It is a problem, you know? So there, there's a lot of people's lives that are going to be affected by this. So whatever it is you need to do, I would start with the ductwork, check that out. You should really get on that ASAP because as of right now, my, my daughter's not coming back to school. There's no way. And just a side note, my children are fourth generation Chatham students. So our roots are deep in this school as well as this community, so.
Thank you, Zina. Anybody, anybody else? Okay. Okay, we're on the board member comment section. Does anyone have any? Rachel, you want to tell us about Legos or competition?
So spent a lot of time at some Lego and tech competitions this weekend at Albany Academy. Our FTC, is my, is it on? Okay. Um, the FTC middle school robotic tech team is great. I actually feel like some of the alliances were the reason why they lost those two. They did really amazing, especially to see their growth from last year. And they placed 13th, right, out of 27th, so. Are the electrifiers, which is, so Lego Challenge is actually for, it could be for fourth to eighth graders. We have made it for to fifth to sixth graders to feed into the seventh to eighth grade tech team to add that continuum before kids get up there. And our, amazingly, our fifth and sixth graders came in first for the innovation project. And they came in second place for the robot performance, and that is enough to get them the invite to the RPI regionals on February 8th. So our season is not over. We're still going. And it, it was pretty amazing. This program, I know a lot of people hear robotics, and they think that is the main platform, but this program teaches so much. Like, yes, it is STEM oriented, but this season, we taught project management skills. We taught, taught, how do you deconstruct a project? And then how do you break yourself into roles to tackle that project in group work? We've done a lot of public speaking with the kids. We have done coding, and we have done some mechanical engineering design, just very basic for fifth and sixth graders, and just kind of push them, you know, gave them these courses and kind of pushed them in the direction of like, okay, now you have to solve these mission challenges, and they certainly rose to the occasion. Their innovation project was on how to solve the staffing shortage for marine biologists in the industry. And they, they actually built a second robot from old mine swarm parts and created a little robot that would process the fish for marine biologists and a drone that went with it to go take all the data from the water where the fish are collected. So they really rose to the occasion and did great. And I'm really happy to see the judges at the competitions recognize that. The own, the, so the, this qualifier, the qualifier we went to was Albany Academy. And so you can actually go to as many qualifiers as you want, but you can only win at one of them. Like, once you've gotten your invitation to the regionals, you're, you're set. Oh, so the only one who beat us at the robot performance was Shen. We beat Skynet. We beat, there was another Shen team, like, John Jay. Like, it's nice to have, you know, that we were up against some behemoths who usually come to win, and we were able to hold our own there, especially for our first year team. And we will be having a open house probably at the end of February. Well, once we have the details in place, we'll invite you all to that as well.
How many students are on, on those teams? How many?
So on the electrifiers, it's five. So there's three fifth graders and two sixth graders. And on FTC, there's six, there's three eighth graders and three seventh graders. And then I actually don't know how many for First Robotics.
There's over a dozen.
Okay, so, so, yeah, so it's kind of, it starts small and, you know, once more kids get engaged. But getting that, those basic program management skills and public speaking skills down, kind of giving them the core to the STEM that they'll need, hopefully that will feed successfully into Sandy and Kate's program at the middle school and individual high school. Have a continuum of, of STEM here in Chatham.
Thank you.
People like you, people like you and Sandy have to be, thanks, over and over again. Wait till we do ice hockey.
That is correct. I'm not knowing much about robotics. I decided on Saturday and then Sunday also to follow the link in and watch it for a while. And it's amazing how you get caught up in it. It's amazing what I didn't understand, but one thing I didn't know was how hard they were working. So thank you so much.
Sandy, quick question. What, what time is the event at Broad Albin Perth?
Kickoff is probably a little after 10:00.
10:00 AM, okay.
And they'll run qualifiers until 3:00-ish, and then they go into semis and finals.
Great. And on February 8th, do you know the time?
Um, I don't know the details yet, but usually, for the Lego, because it's a bit younger kids.
Yeah, yeah.
They usually have the kickoff around 9:30.
Okay.
And they run until probably 2:00.
And that's an RPI.
And then the, the presentations. So, so with First Tech Lego League, or, I'm sorry, First Lego Challenge, it's different from First Tech in that you also have to do an innovation project.
Okay.
So research project on top of that, showing that you can utilize different resources.
Sure.
So there are two parts, two hours. There's only one part of theirs, but ours usually wraps up by four.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. All right, Sasha, we're ready for your students, your representative.
So today was our first day of midterms week. So kids are up and going with that. Last Thursday, we had our winter concert at the high school. And during it, they gave us a preview of a song from Grease, which was really cool to see, and it sounded amazing, which is impressive that they haven't been working on it for that long, and they're already doing great with it. And then Panther Pride Day, we had last Saturday, we had five wins and three loses. And the Booster Club, which was set up there with Concession, said it was a really successful fundraising event. And there was a lot of student and parent volunteers that they were very grateful for. Right now, guidance is working with juniors and sophomores to plan schedules and their enrollment at Questar for next year, which is super exciting. And then on Monday, uh, next Monday, we have our new living environment and new earth science teachers starting. Uh, we've been very grateful for Mr. Gearing and Mr. Pierce filling in for the roles. And as well, we're also grateful for Mr. Hart, who was filling in for Ms. Maris, and she will back on Monday. And then next Tuesday, the student government officers are going on a field trip to Questar. I think I'd mentioned it earlier, it's like a leadership workshop. So this is our second one. Mr. We went to the last one with us, and this time, Ms. Montgomery's bringing us. So I'll give an update on that at the next meeting. But yeah, we're really excited for that.
Thank you, that sounds fantastic. Anybody have any questions for Sasha? Great report, thank you. Okay, top that, Andrew.
That's impossible. So first off, I just wanted to thank Ms. Sanchez for coming in today, meeting with me a couple of times, and also filling our board in. I want, I want you to know and the community to know that we take any of the, we take all of this very seriously. You know, school's health and safety is our number one priority in the district. And I wanted to let everyone know that I've reached out to the Department of Health to get their guidance on moving forward. And we're, we're making a plan based on their guidance. So I will certainly keep the community informed as we, as we continue to work through this. We've also reached out to our school physician as well to get their guidance as well, because these are the, the, the people we work with as a school district, and they are our experts. So thank you for sharing, and we'll certainly keep you updated. Also, I just want to let everyone know, Mr. Chuddy, Assistant Superintendent Business is not here today, so he won't be doing his report. I'll be giving a little bit. And we were supposed to have a technology report today, but Mr. Olson isn't feeling well, so he is not here either. Stay safe, everyone, the flu and bugs are around us. So just a little update, some, some positive news, Foundation Aid. Now, we talked a lot about Hold Harmless, and the governor's been talking a lot about Hold Harmless the past couple of years. There was a big question mark if this was something that the governor was going to continue to pursue this year. We did get our aid runs today, and the good news is, is that Foundation Aid is not being reduced this year. So that's very, very good news. So what that means is, Hold Harmless was not, was not in that report. It was not discussed, it was not mentioned at all, which is interesting because as we know, last year was a big threat to, to take that away. So what this means for Chatham, Foundation Aid, there is actually a 2% increase. That's the positive news. Now, Foundation Aid is just one piece of the aid budget that we get from the state. They also had something like BOSI's aid, pre-K aid, transportation aid, building aid, and a whole lot of other different aid lines. With all the other aid lines, we still do have a decrease from last year right now. It's a couple hundred thousand dollar decrease from what we had last year in school aid. So our Foundation Aid has, has gone up 2%, but some of our other aids from the state have gone down. Being that Mr. Chuddy was not here today, I don't have all the details on what runs those came from, but we'll be giving you more information on that. Mr. Chuddy will review that with the finance committee, in committee, and then we'll give you an update of exactly where that is. Just to remind everyone, this is just the beginning. This is a first aid run. From here, then, it has to be approved, you know, by the different houses and state government. So more information to come. Today, Terry and I, we had a PD at Questar in regards to the future of education. As we know, our kids are changing rapidly, right? And we have to continue to change and update what we do here in the district. As we discussed, the, the state asked us to do some regionalization work, where we gathered all of our data, and we're looking to do more with our neighboring districts, right? To support each other, to really make innovation happen. So we went to this PD today, and there was a group that came in to talk about the future of education. And this is something that you'll be hearing a lot more from me about, because we, our kids are changing, we have to change with them. So as a region, we're looking at this. We're going to use that data that we collected, regionalization, to try to make our educational programs better for our students, and that's going to be the goal. So this was the beginning of that discussion regionally. I'm really excited for this opportunity, and I'll be informing the board as we go along this journey, and of course, our faculty, staff, students, and parents as we go. But future-ready is what it's all about, and that's what we are determined to do here in Chatham. Want to give a project update. So our contractors, subcontractors, architects, project managers are currently in the process of collaborating to make a realistic project timeline. So we talked about this, they gave us a timeline. It was a little too ambitious, because we only have seven weeks to do this work. That's the biggest struggle in schools, because we have kids all year round. We can't just close the classrooms for several months. So they have about seven weeks, eight weeks to get the project done, so they have to really be careful on what they say they can get done. So that was what I've been really kind of pushing and advocating for, is a realistic timeline. And they're still working on it. You know, it takes a lot of collaboration to get that timeline, because you're dealing with many, many different contractors. So we're working on that. So I asked them, I said, we need a deadline, because I need to communicate with our stakeholders on what rooms are being done, and also to communicate with our community of what is being done. So I asked them for a deadline of February 1st. So they told me this should be manageable, so I'm hoping by February 1st, I will be able to give you a really specific timeline of when our projects are being done in this project. So, yeah, we have Phase 25, Summer of 25, and then Phase Summer of 26, are the two phases. And there's going to be some spring work done as well, sprinkled in there. And we're supposed to get a really clear timeline of when everything is going to be completed. So the goal is February 1st. The other piece that, of course, the, the district approved was that air conditioning project at the elementary school. As we know that there's not enough funding, the, the money that was approved by the, the citizens, by our community, is not enough to do the entire project like was planned. So we need options here. So I had, I had a meeting scheduled with the engineer and the architects today to, to discuss what the options are for the air conditioning, because we can't do the project as planned. That unfortunately, due to illness, that product, that meeting today was, was postponed. So that's another big piece. We're hoping to come to our facilities committee with really, a real specific options of what we can do and what we can't do with that money. So as soon as we have that meeting and we get the options, and we get the timeline, we'll be meeting with facilities to review all that. So our facilities committee will be coming, so those are the two things that are still pending in the project. Any questions from the board on that update? Thursday is our CIC, remember, Chatham-Ikeabod-Crayne Football Community Meeting. Thursday is our CIC, remember, Chatham-Ikabod-Cranes Football Community Meeting. This is going to be with Ikabod. As we all know, we're partnering with Ikabod next year for football. We'll be doing a presentation jointly, our athletic directors, myself, and Ikabod Superintendent will be presenting on that, and that's going to be 6:00 PM at Chatham Middle School. So if anyone has any, you know, has any questions or wants to know more about that, please come to our meeting. We'll have, we have a PowerPoint presentation, and that presentation will be posted right after the meeting on both districts' websites. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Terry.
Thank you. So for tonight's academic update, I wanted to share what we've been working on with our teacher leaders. As a review, we have 26 teacher leader positions in the district. The majority of the positions oversee an academic team, such as a grade-level team at the elementary or middle levels, or a content-based team that could be K-12, K-6, 612, they're kind of broken down in that fashion. These teacher leaders plan and lead academic team meetings on selected Monday meeting dates throughout the year. This year, there are 15 of those. There are also teacher leader positions for professional development, the senior team, and the mentor program. And those teacher leaders provide leadership for their respective programs on hold regular meetings as well. So over the last couple of months, since I have been here at Chatham, I've had the honor to facilitate monthly meetings with the teacher leaders. We've had many great discussions and done some activities together. Some of the things we've done, and a couple of activities on finding your why, why you, why are you a teacher leader, the power of collaboration and working together to solve problems, listening and working with each other, leading data discussions with teams based on all the data work we've done and shared with all of you. We've mentioned RightPath, the data organization tool. So the folks from that company presented to the teacher leaders this past meeting as well, virtually. And finally, we're reading a book right now called Trust and Inspire. It's a book on leadership. It's written by Stephen Covey. Not the Stephen Covey you know, but his son. I think it's Stephen M.R. Covey, but his son, so, still in the family. And we started our book study on that at our last meeting, covered the first few chapters. In our next meeting in February, we're going to continue the book study, and we'll be also talking about best practices with the Monday meetings and what's happening in Monday meetings, you know, and share out with each other. It's funny, in such a small district, and this often happens, we don't always have time to share with each other what we're doing. So this gives us a chance to do that. And I would just share with you all that I will, Regional PD Day that we'll be doing in March, that's, I don't know how many schools exactly, I think it's around 18 of our school districts in the region, will be sharing that day as a professional learning day. And I put in, and I'll be presenting a virtual workshop that day called Effective Teacher Leadership. I think it goes without saying, we're extremely proud of our teacher leadership program here at Chatham, and a large part of what I'll be doing in that workshop is sharing all the great stuff that we do. So I think we're very fortunate to have not only the structure, but the, more importantly, the people who are teacher leaders. They're an impressive group, always engaged and willing to, at the end of a long day, sometimes still jump into great conversations, and I love working with them. So I just wanted to share that, and if you have any questions.
How was the RightPath presentation received? I mean, did the company do a good job explaining what the tools were, how to make it easy to use?
I think so, and they had a visual of it. It's the kind of thing, and Andrew, please feel free to jump in here too, that I think, once you see it, the power of it is it's made for you. You can customize it for a particular school district. So when you see your data up there, it will be more powerful. But yeah, there were four or five questions that were asked of the presenter, and I felt that it went well and was well-received.
Will they give you, like, support if, you know, push comes to shove, they're trying to make something work? I mean, is that the nature of the...
They've been super easy to work with thus far. And then, pretty much what they do, I think what's kind of fail-safe with it is, we'll provide them with the data and they'll, so it's, we have a hand in it, so we're not, I guess, I don't know how else to say it than that, we will trust ourselves and then they'll work with us. So I think it's going to, you know, the one thing that came out of that presentation too, is we have so many different dashboards and folders and things. And this is probably true of any school district that I know of. This would really make that much more seamless and easy. So I think that was the, that was well-received for sure.
Great. Anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, so we'll go on to Board Committee Reports. Policy Committee, Rachel?
I keep forgetting to turn it on and off. Okay, one thing I just want to make a note of, as I was closing for attachments, unless I'm missing it in the second section, the minutes don't appear that they have gotten attached. They're not in new business discussion, right? So if we can just make a note to, the minutes are in the folder on the policy drive, they should be on there. At any rate, so at our last policy meeting, we tackled three policies that needed some really somewhat minor updates to Title IX, Policy 100. You can see, there's not a lot of edits on it. We changed the title to match more in line with what NISPA's title recommendation is, which is Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity. It had been Non-Discrimination, Anti-Harassment, and Equal Opportunity. However, we also did Policy 115, which is Student Bullying and Harassment Prevention and Intervention References, which we felt having all the anti-harassment in that one policy for 115 would be easier for parents to find it all in one place if they're having a problem, rather than having it cross-referenced in both. So right now, Policy 100 is Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity, and Policy 115, it used to be Dignity for All Students, but now it's Student Bullying and Harassment Prevention and Intervention, to hopefully make that more clear to everyone. We had two recommended updates. One was to add a paragraph about the website accessibility, and the second was to add a sentence about the grievance procedure. And then we also updated the references after adding both of those pieces to the final copies. The other policy you'll see on the agenda tonight is 9520.6, and, I don't have the title in front of me. It is the Rights of Employees to Express Breast Milk in the Workplace. This is actually a required policy, and we did not have this on our books at all. So we are adopting it now. We did not make any edits to the recommended NISPA sample, but it was pretty straightforward, straight from the legislature to policy. So we'll be adopting that as well tonight. On the handbook, there are four handbook pieces that have updates tonight. There were very minor ones on the superintendent evaluation and the handbook maintenance. The new member orientation. Sad Matt's not here. I added a whole graph and timeline to make everything more clear. Doesn't everybody love that? So adding visuals to this handbook to make the chart more clear, the timeline more clear, what expectations are. And I also added, so in the original handbook, we had the each handbook section, and then the templates at the end. I've actually rethought that, and I'm adding the templates directly to the section that they are referencing. So with the new member, new board member orientation is also the new board member welcome letter. So everything will be right there as you flip through the handbook for clearer consistency. The other one I want to mention is the navigating, maintaining, and utilizing the district and Board of Education shared Google Drive. So this is part of our effort, and I know you saw it on December's meeting, this is part of our effort to kind of centralize the data collection that we receive for our oversight purposes, just to make it easier. So we don't have to flip between board docs or find the right meetings or anything. Everything's now centralized in one location. And previously, we had discussed having all of the committee drives, including policy, right on the shared drive. However, policy is of a hina. It's just so big that we actually ended up deciding to allow it to keep its autonomy on its own drive. So we have the shared drive, and you should all be able to view the policy drive right now. Can everybody do that? Is there any issue with that? Debbie and Kelly have it up to date and built in, so we're in good order on the drive. So it is ready to use, and you can access the information as needed. As you can see, I have the chart and layout for the whole map of how to access the information and how it will be logged going forward. I think we did discuss maybe having like a workshop or something, kind of sitting down all together and going through this to make sure everybody's on the same page with how to utilize it effectively.
Yeah, we'll get a little further down the road, just a little note that we are not going to try to adopt individual sections of the handbook. We're just, you know, as the Policy Committee is finalizing them, giving you a chance to review them, we do our adoption at our annual meeting. But meanwhile, everybody will be up to date, they'll know it's the new policy handbook and...
And that also, like, if you have any feedback for us as we bring these sections forward to the public session, you know, let us know so that we can make the edits as we go, rather than like one big, three-hour meeting to make all the edits. At the end, it would be a lot easier if you have any suggestions or edits.
Which is why we needed Matt here tonight.
Which is why we need Matt to just get out of the system and let us know. But I think he'll actually be very happy with this. It has the visuals, it has the map, everything's a detailed explanation, and I personally feel it's pretty straightforward to follow, much more comprehensive than the previous one. The previous one was a little clunky, and I think this has cleaned up a lot of it, how other people feel.
A bit of a workshop session would be nice.
Would be nice, okay.
Thank you.
We'll try to get one in. Okay, so, so that is, so you're not approving these, that's why they're in the Policy Committee section. You are approving the Policies 100, Policy 115, 9520.6, and you're actually also approving 5251 tonight, which is the fundraising one, which if you'll remember, at the December 10th meeting, we had a whole discussion about, and I talked about it, and then we just moved on and never actually did it. So now, we will have a motion for its first reading as well. But I believe we've discussed that thoroughly at this point. Another point, I kind of almost don't even want to say this because Matt's here, and he's missing out for his opportunity to hear me say in the discussion about which charters are open and which charters are closed, Matt was right, guys. He'll probably get a recording of this, of this meeting. But the committees that we have are advisory committees. They don't have any power, actually. We just review either finance, we review policy, facilities, and what we're doing is we're doing our oversight of the district in there. As far as finance is concerned, Mike Chuddy will take, you know, everything that's reviewed in Finance Committee and bring it into public session, and then we will see the budget for everyone publicly. As far as policy, we are making edits, and just making sure our policy manual is in compliance with what it needs to be. We're not legislators, we're not writing policy, we're kind of more like copy editors, making sure everything is in good order. The only thing that we free-write is the handbook. But at any rate, we will be tackling the language in the charters, because right now the language is confusing on which committees are open and which committees are closed. And we're going to clarify that language, I guess, to be more understandable. And secondly, we are also going to tackle, one of the discussions that got brought up is, we're a board, we were a board of nine, we're now a board of seven, so we have shrunk. But in the time that we shrunk the board from nine to seven, the community has grown by 2,000 people. So would it make more sense to, you know, we're not going to enlarge ourselves again, but would it make more sense maybe to rethink how many community seats? I think we have two community seats on each committee right now, whether or not we'll open up, open it up to a third, or more community members to help share the work, I think would also be a consideration that we'll tackle as well, if anybody has an opinion on that. Ariel?
When we went from nine to seven, what did you say about 2,000?
So we had about 7,500 people in 2020, and now we have 9,300 people in the district.
In the district?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So what we're saying is the board shrunk, but the community grew. No, as far as the students, but what we're saying is, the board shrunk, so we have to share the work, what our bandwidth is to sit on all the committees, but the community has grown, grown. And honestly, I feel like...
Showing an interest.
It's showing interest, that they're engaged, you know, so. And really, when, particularly in policy, yes, like, our goal is to make sure that we're in compliance with everything, but one of the things that we've been really careful about is that we want the policy manual, that if you are a parent and you're having an issue, you will be able to navigate it. Things make sense, you can understand. Basically, what we do is, we read if there's too much legalese, or if there's, you know, some super-fluous language in there, we try to make it as easily understandable as possible, so you can navigate it on your own and get to the proper authorities or procedures in place, basically. So having parent, community members in particular, is very helpful in giving us those feedback of like, okay, does this make sense to you? Will this be helpful to you as a parent? Did I miss anything? Trying to think what else we... We had a very efficient hour and 40-minute meeting.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Okay. So move on. We have Wellness Committee on here, Andrew?
Oh, yeah.
Just a quick update. We haven't met yet, but Linda and I did have a planning meeting, because our first meeting is next week, on the 30th. So what I did is, I sent a letter out to the community, asking for members of the Wellness Committee. We're trying to keep the committee, you know, concise, because the more people you have, the harder it is to get a date together. So I asked for two family members, or two community members to be part of the committee. We had over 15 families interested, which I just want to thank everyone that was interested, because like you said, the more, you know, people we can get on to participate in these different conversations, the better. So what we did is, we chose two out of a hat, is what Linda and I did, because we did say we were going to stick to two. And I did send an email to every single person, thanking them for being part of the committee, but we have two great community members on it. We have some administrators on it, one principal on it, myself and Terry will be on the committee, Linda as a board member, and then we have a couple teachers on the committee as well. So our first meeting will be on next week, so we're looking forward to getting that going. We are going to really talk about what our goals are, what the committee's goals are, what our focus is going to be. The district already created some wellness goals, so that will really be, really be driving that committee. We want to get some more specific pieces as well from the committee itself, and really talk about the needs of the district and how we can move forward with those needs. So we're looking forward to our first meeting, and I'll give you an update next time we meet, which is beginning of February.
Okay, thank you, Andrew. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just say that this is such an important committee, as all are, but one of the board goals this year is on wellness, and we have priorities under that, and one of the priorities is re-establishing this committee, which has not met in several years. So that will be a focus of seeing where we are, gaining all the information we can from the members, and seeing what we can realistically do this year and move into a plan for the following years.
Thanks, Linda. Okay, we're moving into new business discussion. R45, be it resolved that the qualifications of Melanie Spock have been reviewed by the Chatham Central School District Board of Education and deemed eligible to serve... and deemed eligible to serve, and therefore be it resolved that the board approves the nomination of Melanie Spock as a candidate for the Rensselaer Columbia Green Boces Board. Can I have a motion? Anybody have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so moved. Okay, moving on to new business, first readings of Policy 100. There's no, I don't have the name of it right here. What is Policy 100? Okay, the non-discrimination and equal opportunity policy that Rachel described, the edits to bring it into compliance, and the Policy 115, student harassment and bullying prevention intervention, same thing, just some updates. And the new policy, 95, 20.6, the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace, that is a state law. We had to implement this policy. And the update, 252, 51, fund drives, gifts, donations, and solicitations. Can I have a All in favor? Any opposed? Does anybody have any questions? Okay, sorry, skip that spot. All right, new Okay, R40, ready? Okay. R46, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the donation of dumbbells from Dave Laveau at a value of approximately $500. This donation will be used for physical education in the weight room for enhancement and conditioning for school sports. Can I have a motion? Anybody have any questions? Thank you, David. All in favor? Any opposed? R47, Board of Education approved the agreement with Twin County Recovery Services beginning September 10, 2024 through June 30, 2025, for consultant services, which may include, but is not limited to, prevention counseling, evidence-based programming, outreach, and education to community members, and provide groups designated by the district at no cost, and authorize the superintendent to sign the agreement. Can I have a motion? Do you want to say something, Andrew?
Just wanted to say, the reason there's no cost is because this, Twin Counties received a grant from the county, so there's no cost to the district, because the county is paying for their services.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Number three, R, okay. All right, my computer's locked up. Okay, it just blew it. All right, R48, this is for the capital improvement project contract. Let's see, whereas the Chatham Central School District received, accepted, and opened bids for SEI Project Number 22-4231 on December 11, 2024, whereas the low responsible bidder for contract number 100 is base proposal $799,000. Peter Louie and Brothers Contracting, Waterfleet, New York, total contracts awarded $799,000. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Chatham Central School District hereby awards the above contract and authorizes the Board President to execute the contract between the district and the above contractor in a form acceptable to the school district's council on the recommendation of the superintendent, construction manager, and architect. It further resolved that the school district administration, construction manager, architect, and legal counsel are directed to draft and execute the necessary documents in a form acceptable to the school district's council to commence construction on the project. I have a motion. Any questions?
Back through my notes on the bidding day, our bidding. I couldn't find, do you know what piece this is? I couldn't find Peter Louie and Brothers, and I, or the project 22, 40.
So this was a recent bid, so I guess it was originally bid last year, but they had to change the work. I wasn't here last year to know all the details, but apparently they weren't able to bid that for some reason, so we just rebid this in December. So this is a new bid. So there was a whole group of new people that bid for this work.
Do you know what the work is?
Yeah, the, the work is more, more concrete work, more blacktop work in between. It's the work that's in between the elementary school and the high school, and it's going to be that fence, they're putting that fence up in between. So it's that whole piece of the project. So it's fencing, blacktop, and some, I believe, some landscaping in between as well, mostly blacktop.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're on to consensus agenda. Can I have a motion to accept consensus agenda K through M? Anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we're on N, items for future agenda. I'm not sure if this is a future agenda item, but I did want to reintroduce the idea of the board self-evaluation. We haven't done it in a few years, and it really is good practice to do that. I know we're kind of late in the game, we should have started this process earlier, but we're just kind of climbing out of the weeds with all the other policy work. So I would like to introduce that as something. I don't know if this is actually a future agenda item.
Well, it is. So we have it on future agenda for policy for that section of the handbook.
Okay.
So maybe once we get to that and we have it drafted, because we don't have that section at all in the handbook yet, once that is drafted, we'll bring it to, you know, public session to discuss. Maybe we'll bring a couple options, I don't know, depending on what we find of how we want to go about it this year, and maybe some metrics for going forward.
Yeah, just to get it started again. That would be good practice.
So I guess it'll be a future agenda item, but it will be policy who will be responsible for it, the superintendent.
Okay, that sounds good. Does anybody else have anything that they want to add to that? Okay, so we're on to the second public comment section. This is for anyone who wants to comment on the items that we have spoken about during this meeting. Please, Debbie has a sign-in sheet right here.
So I can write and talk. I'm Susan Deller. I'm the parent of past students, the parent of a teacher that worked here, and grandparent of future students to Chatham. I'm talking and want to address the mold situation in this school.
Put your microphone up.
Going, when my kids were even in the elementary school, I was heard that the elementary school had mold problems. At the time, I didn't realize how serious mold is. Microtoxins destroy people. They attack them at many levels. Xena was right, they cause cancer, they cause reproductive issues. It is a serious problem that needs serious study done. You hired Watson and Associates last year. Reading through their, they did a lot of visual inspection. They had a boroscope, but it was too large for the diffuser opening, so they weren't able to see into the duct system. You are getting ready to do more duct work. Please take this time to hire a real company that has boroscopes that will fit into your ducts and really look into this. The limitations, if you want to read, you should all have this report. Tell about the report, it's reasonable, they're inherently limited, because to really get a full look, you do, need to do full demolition procedures. You should be doing, when you're doing the ceilings over, which I see there's another new stain, even though we don't have leaks in the ceiling, but there's a new one there anyways. I hear that it's still leaking in. Mold remediation needs to be done within 24 to 48 hours, or it's growing. I have pictures, my daughter was a science teacher, she did not want to leave this school. She was forced out because of her health. It has not been an issue in her new school. You, before you make more people sick, more teachers sick, more students sick, please take this seriously. Don't just pat the parent on the back and say you're going to look into it. Really do it. Thank you.
My name's Kirk Deller. I've lived in the community all my life, 63 years. That gray hair is all bought and paid for. I've run a business here for 43 years. I have multiple properties, and I graduated from this school. What disturbed me the most, Mary Ann, is when my wife sent you an email. You said, and we have a copy of your email back to her, text, that you were told that you nor any board member can speak to us. Could you explain why you sent that? We can show you a copy of the text if you'd like.
I won't deny that, but at the time, I didn't know how to speak to it. I, I could have an opinion, but I couldn't know what was the right thing to say. I mean, there's, there's a legal process for everything. We have to, we are held to an account. I mean, you guys know that, you know, my heart goes out to, I mean, I care about these people. You're my friends. You are my friends.
Do you?
Honestly, you know I, well, you don't know me, you don't know me personally, but I know.
I know what I was told. So I was told that the Nellers were going to sue the school. I want to go on record. Well, maybe you did or didn't, but I'm going to go on record to say that we, we have never sued anybody, nor do we ever have an intent on suing any, anyone. What I would like, you're the school, you're the head of the school board, the president, correct?
Yes.
If you read New York State's suggested characteristics and responsibilities of a school board member, it's to listen and respond to community needs. You received, now maybe you didn't see them, but the past superintendent saw tests showing, these are, these, this is not hearsay, folks. These are actual tests, mold tests, blood tests, urine tests that showed mold toxicity that was double, and even at some instances, triple. And then one of your Boces people comes in with a wand and waves it around the air, I'm a business person, and says, you're fine. Go ahead, Mary. Well, that's who the.
They tested for CO2.
They, they.
They tested for CO2.
Yeah, but the, the problem was, that's exactly my point. We were asking for a mold test, and it was not done. Is there, could you tell me why?
I thought it was. When we got those reports, that's what I thought they had done.
Well, they didn't.
We're not here to answer to.
So the district had two tests done. They did have Questar come, and I think that's who you're referring to.
Questar, correct.
And then Watson came, and that was an independent mold evaluator that was hired by the district.
They didn't test the ducts. Here's the deal. This school, when it was originally built, other than Muriel, no one else was here. I was one of the first people to go through. This school was based upon a southern, this, this building and its infrastructure was intended for a southern climate. That ductwork never worked. The heating has never ever worked since I graduated. There's all, there's been a problem forever. As a taxpayer, I implore you as school board members to take this seriously, because people are getting sick. When my daughter left here and went to Taconic Hills, we, she was tested. And night and day, a member, and I, I don't know the name, but somebody in a meeting in the school district made the comment, well, it's probably because you work on your farm. Well, I can assure you that we had her tested this summer while she was working on our farm. And you want to know what? Her levels had entirely dropped. You can't not look at the facts, folks. If you don't look at these facts, you're going to have a problem on your hands that I don't think you want to, you want to really take a look at. Now, Mr. Court, I, I, I don't, I know this is all new to you, but this should be your number one priority, because if not, you better contact your insurer to see if they have some type of mold coverage perhaps, to maybe get rid of some of this stuff, or get it rectified. Because there's going to be a storm coming, folks, and it's not one that you're going to want to run into, because you've been given the facts, and they've been brushed underneath the rug. That's all I want to say. I want it to go on record. We're here, we're a part of the community. We have donated tens of thousands of dollars, let alone time, into this district. And I'm not talking about tax dollars, I'm talking about donations to every, every cause that comes down the pipe. I get a letter, we want more money. Guess what we do? We send more money. But I'm not going to send any more money. And I'm going to tell all my businesses, businesses here that are representing, that have sent a lot of money to this district. And it's not going to, it's going to stop. If you will not look, truly look, not give us lip service into this problem, because you got a problem, you're going to have to
Justin Madsen, I'm Madeline Madsen, Nadine's father. After discussing the mold topic with community members, people that I associate with, it was brought to my attention that the reason Taconic Hills got their new school was because they were facing similar problems. They had mold, they had sewage spilling out into their hallways, they had a nest of problems left over from a building that was built in the mid-1900s, similar to this. They were Akawamik, they were all over the place, right? They had like a couple different buildings. They're all set aside, they're into a nice new facility that everyone in the district looks up to. They have swimming pools, they have state-of-the-art stuff, they have a nice bus I see that drives them around that's wrapped in, you know, things. And we sit here in Chatham, we pay out, we pay out the nose for our taxes. We have great members of the community that contribute to put in, we see little return. I think you're, the eyes, the wool pulled over if you're thinking there's no mold in the structure up top. The bones of the building are rotten, you got substrates. I've been in construction my whole life, you just don't get rid of mold. When people have moldy showers, they go down to the studs, they go beyond that, wherever it is, and they have to replace the stuff. That hasn't been done here. So to think it's not here, I think you're sleeping. So I would just reflect on what happened at Taconic Hills, and it basically came down to a walkout of the students and the parents, and saying that they're done with it. So, thank you.
Okay, so we will move into, we do have a reason to have executive session. It's actually, Andrew, is it all three of these listed? We did. Yes. Yes, for several reasons. Collective negotiations, the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and a confidential student issue. Can I have a motion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so I need to appoint a district clerk pro temp. Can I have a motion to appoint Andrew Court as a district clerk pro temp for executive session? All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. We do not foresee a return to open session. Thank you, everybody.